Home is up. I always think about love, family and safety when I think about home. And unfortunately, not everybody has that option, that opportunity. But that for me, that's why home is me. When I say I'm home, I'm in a place in which I'm loved. I feel safe and secure and I have my family around me.
Homes RI is a coalition of organizations working to ensure that everyone has a safe, healthy and affordable home. Hopefully, these interviews will bring insights to the need and work and highlight where housing intersects with other issues and opportunities.
My name is Sabina Matos. I'm the president of the Providence City Council. I have been in the Providence City Council since 2010 is when I was selected. My term started in January of 2011. I became the president of the city council in this last term, which started two years ago. Many of you are not aware that the Providence City Council now is term limited. So I'm in my last term as a councilperson for the city of Providence. This is new to the city. The term limit started actually with with my class, the group that started with me. That time in 2011, it was seven council members, new council member that started. Right now, we are going to be facing a position in which they, for the next election of the 2022, most likely there is a high probability that most of the members of the Providence City Council are going to be new members. It's a high probability.
That's wild.
It is.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. I always said that term limit is good if whoever comes next knows what they're doing. So if we get a lot of people that not sure about what they're doing, then turn limits are not that great. So we have to make sure that for 2022, there are individuals running for office to be in the Providence City Council that have a sense of what we do and understand the challenges that the city faces.
Thanks for sharing that. And you know, you mentioned that you were first elected in 2010. So I was wondering if you could share a little bit about what motivated you to become a city councillor in the first place?
To be honest, I never thought I was going to be an elected official. I have volunteer on campaigns. I really enjoy the energy that happens on election day when everyone is like running around trying to figure out, okay, who do we have to find? I love that energy. I love being a volunteer for somebody else's campaign. I never thought I was going to be the candidate. What happens is there were two council members that reach out to me. They saw that I was always involved in my community. I was part of the neighborhood association and I was part actually of the local CDC, Onyville Housing. I was on the board of Onyville Housing. And they approached me and they asked me to run for office. At the beginning, my first answer was that no, I'm not doing it. And we all know like this typical for females, women's, you got to ask those seven times for us to run for office. So at the end of the conversation, both council members was Councilman Aponte and the late Councilman Miguel Luna. They told me, don't say no, just think about it and come back and let us know what you decided. And that's what I did. I thought about where I was in my life, my professional, personal life. I was kind of in transition for both. And I thought that putting my energy into running for office was a good thing to do. The way I thought about it, if I win, I'm able to do a lot to improve my neighborhood and get a lot accomplished. And if I don't win, I learned experience. So and that's kind of what happened. The first time I ran for office, actually, I didn't win. But I ran a second time and I was selected on the second time.
Awesome. So now that you're kind of like, you've been in it for a while. Like, how does, what's the process from something just going from like an idea to being a policy or an ordinance? Or like, how does that, how does that work?
So this is what I've kind of what I was alluding to earlier when I was talking about if people are running for office, if they really understand what they're getting into, what we do. So I have to say for me, some of the biggest surprises or big shock is that things don't move as fast as you thought they should be moving. And it's frustrating, but once you're elected, then you learn why things are now moving faster and things are not getting done as fast as you would like to. So it's the frustrating part. But then you also learn about what are the tools that you have available. In the city council, we have the ordinance, but we also have the resolutions. So the ordinance for the city are kind of the laws of the city. Their resolutions are statements that us as elected body make. So it's our opinion about current events or issues. When it comes to the ideas for either an ordinance or legislation, it can come within the council members, an idea that either one of us has. But also it could come from the constituents. A constituents can reach out to their elected officials and says, well, this is a problem in the neighborhood. And I think we need to have a legislation. The city needs to have a law in the books on how to address this issue. So it can come from us or it can come from the constituents, the public.
Yeah, and great that you mentioned, you know, the constituents because another question we had was, you know, public meetings are usually the way and the forum where residents can engage with specific policies and about projects that are proposed, like a new building or a new ordinance. So we're wondering if you could talk a little bit about what are the ways that residents can engage in policymaking in the long term? And you know, have their voices heard in the most effective ways possible? Because we know that public meetings are not always everyone's preferred way to engage with their with their local officials.
Yes, so there's different ways. Actually, as you said, not everybody feel comfortable coming into a public hearing and testify. They can always call us directly. They can, most of us share our phone numbers publicly. We have our emails. It's really easy to email your council member. All you have to do is just war and the number of the war district where you are. So for me would be war 15@providenceri.gov. So you can find this information in our website, the city council website, which is councilprovidencecitycouncil.gov. You can find the information there about how to contact your elected officials. But let me just go back a little bit into what are our rules, right? Because I have gotten this question before, why the public cannot come into a council meeting, a regular city council meeting and speak? So the rules of the Providence City Council is that for our regular meetings, which happens on the first and the third Thursday of each month, the conversation is among the council members. There's not, there's not an opportunity for the public to speak during that meeting. But what we have is we have the committees meeting. Most of the work happens in committee. So if anyone is interested in giving testimony or having the ones to speak during one of the committee meetings, they can reach out to the chairperson of the committee and let them know that they would like to come and speak. I would say most of the time the chairperson agreed to that, to have the person bring testimony within the committee. Most of the work happens in committee, actually. But we also, they are son ordinance that requires by our laws to have a public hearing. In the public hearing, what we do is we just listen. And this is sometimes it's a little bit of confusion because when individuals come into the public hearing, they are expecting that they're going to engage in a back and forth conversation with the council members. But the public hearing is just about listening to different opinions. We want to hear the individuals are against and the individuals are for any legislation that we are contemplating. So the council members are there, we're listening. So in the committee is when you have the opportunity to have a little, have more of an interaction with council members. Or it could be also with the staff of the of the city. If we're talking about something that is affecting, let's say, public work, maybe the director of public work is there and he can answer some of the questions that the public can have at that moment.
Nice, just to follow up on that, because you mentioned attending meetings and everything. Just would love to hear your thoughts on how that has changed since you first came into the city council in 2010, especially, you know, with social media and different platforms since COVID started. So if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Well, I have to say that they have been, since I've been elected, I've been surprised to see the low number of testimonies that we get when we are adopting the budget, when we are approving the budget. We rarely get anyone coming to testify. And it was surprising to me at the beginning when I saw that. But here, this year, it has been like that. When we are approving the budget, maybe we get two, three individuals that comes from the public to testify. And besides that, we get the testimony from the staff of the mayors, the mayor staff or the finance team staff. In most of the time, we don't get any more testimony than that. Now, we are using this online platform due to the pandemic. But I just want to back up a little bit because we at the Providence City Council, just because of that noticing that there was low engagement from the public, we were already working on how we could have our meetings available online. So just before the pandemic started, we had already made the investment into fixing the audio system in the city council chamber, adding cameras so we could transmit our meetings via Facebook. So we were already in that process. So when the pandemic happened last year and we have to figure out how to have public meetings virtually, we were positioned, we were well positioned to make that transition. In, as a matter of fact, we were the first municipal body that engaged into having virtual meetings and pivot right away into having virtual meetings because we were already getting prepared for that. If you remember from last year, actually, we were the first one to face some of the challenges of having virtual meetings also, all the Zoom bombings that were happening. So we went through some of those. But we pivoted right away and we started having our meeting. We didn't have to cancel, cancel any of our regular meetings. So because of the pandemic, we had been having them every, every month regularly. But this has allowed, having virtual meetings has allowed the access for the public to connect more with the city council and what is, what is happening and the meetings that were happening, which is good to be able to, to have the constituents of the taxpayers of the city of Providence involved in the process. So I think that it is tough to talk about the bright side. I don't like talking about the bright side of this last year. But I think this, this could be a positive thing that came out of all the negative from last year.
Like, what do you see as like the biggest challenges that the council faces to increasing the supply and like, like fitting the needs that Providence faces?
So when it comes to that affordable housing, in, I think, just in general for the city of Providence, the challenge that we have is how we ensure that we improve the quality of life in our city and in our neighborhoods. But once we do that, the individuals that had been here all along don't get displaced. This is a challenge that I'm facing right now in Onyville. One of the reasons why I wanted to run for office and one of the things that I wanted to accomplish is to change the perception about Onyville. I remember when I was at the beginning, before I was selected, people were talking, it's still like everything negative. They wanted to use as a reference Onlyville. And I was frustrated with that because I knew that many, the majority of the people that live in this area of the city are hardworking families, working really hard. And we didn't deserve that reputation. So I wanted to change that reputation and that perception. The challenge that we have right now is that Onlyville has become cool, right? It feels like now that we have a high demand. There's people do want to live in this part of the city. They want to come here. So the challenge that we have right now as our elected official, local elected officials, is how do we maintain affordability in the city, in the neighborhoods? While we welcome in a new energy, a new energy, a new individuals to come in, but how do we make sure that the ones that were already here are not being displaced? So that's the challenge. And I can tell you, one of the things that I'm always trying to, to inject in any development that is common is, is there going to be affordable housing component to it? I can tell you like a good, a good example is that this project of the 60K that opens about three years ago now, I believe, three years ago. That project was done and it has, most of the units are affordable in that building, 60K. Right now, we're working on a new project, which is Paragon Mills. The Paragon Mills, we've been trying for a long time to get that site developed, right? And we got different offer, the planning department at some point got an offer that basically was going to transform the whole mill into luxury apartment in, I couldn't, I couldn't support that because that was just was going to accelerate the gentrification in the neighborhood. So that was not the right project for, for us to support. And this is what we can do as local official. Make sure that we're supporting projects that are responsible to the community and in making sure that we're supporting projects that are not going to be the accelerators of the gentrification.
That's great. And you know, it's good that you mentioned some of these projects and which ones you choose to support. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about what are some policies that are being proposed right now that could transform housing in Providence that you're excited about working on and that you think could be particularly transforming?
Yes, we were having several meetings around the topic of housing. Actually, I have to, I cannot leave this conversation without crediting and acknowledging the hard work of my colleague, Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris, just the deputy majority leader, Mary Kay Harris. She has made housing her priority in the work that she's doing. She's been doing a lot of work to ensure that that happens. So we have done, we have taken some steps with her leadership and Councilwoman Ryan and Councilman Aponte also when he was in the city council. Some of the things that we work on is to make sure that 10% of all the proceeds coming in from the TSAs are dedicated to housing, to the affordable housing. So 10% of every dollars from the TSA are going into the housing trust fund. We also reestablished the housing trust fund. And we are dedicating those funds from TSAs. Besides that, we authorized the PRA, which is the agency, the Province Redevelopment Agency, that's the one that managed the housing trust fund, for them to go out for bonding for $20 million for affordable housing. And we are looking also at what other alternative we have to incentivize the development, incentivize the development of housing in the city of Providence. And with the understanding that once we are not going to be able to produce all of the housing that we need, the government cannot produce all of the housing that we, that we need, either the city or the state. But we also have to understand that we need private developers to come on board and to build housing, affordable housing and housing are at different income brackets. I can tell you, I had had the experience with individuals that would love to live in the city of Providence. And I can think about this, this couple, both retired, right? And they were, wanted to live in the city of Providence, but they were faced with the challenge that they couldn't find units available. Either we had, they needed to be completely low income or they needed to have a really high income. But there was not housing available for someone in their situation, a couple that just retire or for teachers, for police officers, for firefighters. So we need to make sure that there is enough supply of housing and housing being developed and produced every year in order to be able to address the challenges that we're going to be facing.
Awesome. What are, what do you, what do you consider like some of the big wins in terms of housing that the city council has had during your tenure?
So I have to say that just recently, I just, well, I mentioned that the 20 millions for the bond, for 20 millions for housing, the 10% of the TSAs to go into affordable housing. We just approved the source of income ordinance in the city council. In Councilwoman, Councilwoman Rachel Miller was very crucial on moving this piece of legislation through the city council. We just approved that at the city council. We also just approved, actually, it's going to be on the agenda for tonight for the final approval, is an ordinance that's making sure that individuals are not being displaced from their house. Right now, they have been, we have to make sure that whenever we're using the receivership program is done through the city, I'm not having private organizations using the receivership tool to force individuals out of their houses. So I think those are some of the housing related wins that we had had.
Is there like a, like a moment that like kind of stands out in those efforts? Like, like a moment maybe where it didn't seem like something was going to get passed and you worked through something with your colleagues to make it happen?
Yes, I think that the source of income ordinance is, it was challenging. There were strong opinions about it in the city council. And it took working with my colleagues in the city council to approve it and to get it passed. I think that that's the one that comes to mind recently. We had had all the challenges in the past with other legislations related to housing in a different, that I will say we had a strong opinions of both sides, on both ways in the city council. But I would say the source of income is one that recently that we were able to approve, that it took a lot of work and with my colleagues to make it happen. Yeah.
And do, I would also love to hear, you know, is there any sort of unseen or unexpected barrier to affordable housing in Providence that you would like to dedicate your energy and in the time that you have?
Yes, so one of the things is, as I mentioned earlier, we've been having meetings with some private developers in trying to, one is create an incentive for more development of housing that is going to incentivize private developers also to invest in affordable housing. That's something that we're working on that I think is going to, is something that we really need. And I'm going to be putting a lot of my energy to that. The second thing, which is connected, is I had been exploring this work together with a report that Grow Smart Rhode Island did that is looking at the impact, the economic impact that it would have in the state of Rhode Island if we will grow our population. And how the city of Providence can be poised to be the place in which that growth could happen. And for that to happen, we're going to need housing. Because we're looking at, we have the goal of how we can increase the population of the city of Providence to be 250,000 individuals. So in, the first time I was having this conversation, actually, with Dave Caldwell from Bill RI, we was having this conversation. And the first time I thought, wow, is this possible? But then my conversation with him, I learned more like, this happened before. We used to have this, this numbers of residents in the city of Providence. It could happen again. But in order for that to happen, we need to have enough housing available. So we have to continue incentivizing the construction of new units to be added to the market.
This incentive program, is this like a, like an inclusionary zoning model or?
So, yeah, so right now we haven't settled into anything in particular. So we're exploring what are the things that we have to do. We are also exploring the finances, what would it take to make sure that private investors are willing to come and invest in developing new housing in the city of Providence? So we're still exploring different options.
Is there anything that we haven't touched on that you feel like, like you would like to highlight?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that the city of Providence, more than 40% of our land is non-taxable. This is something that we have to keep in mind. And especially also when we're talking about developing housing and affordable housing. If 40% of our land is not available for this growth that we're planning, we have to be willing to go up. So we need more density. So this is another area that I'm exploring to see how we can update our zoning to be able to add more density in the city of Providence. I think this is going to be key in order to be able to add enough housing units to be available in the city. So just keep that in mind.
Awesome, yeah. It's not something people usually think about when they.
Yeah, but it's a big challenge. It could be a big barrier to developing affordable housing, actually.
Yeah. So if, just like, I want a random person that follows like our social media account or just like your everyday resident of Providence, like happens upon this video, what's like one thing, like one call to action that you would give them that they could take that would like increase the supply of affordable housing or at least like help them get involved? Like, what would be your? Or at least like help them get involved? Like, what would be your call to action to?
Oh, yes. So, no, thanks. So I will ask them first to find out who is your local elected officials. There's a lot of individuals that don't know who their local elected officials are. Make sure that you reach out to your council person and give them your, give them feedback on your opinions and your ideas. I'm pretty sure that all of you out there have many good ideas of what we could do to address the housing crisis happening right now in our city. So make sure you know who your elected official is, reach out to this person and make sure that you're engaged and you participate of the of the meetings. Right now, it's almost a non-stuse, where you have the meetings available in via Zoom. You can connect at that time. But if if you're not able to connect, you can go to the city council YouTube channel. You're able to watch the meetings. So you can do this almost at any, at your own pace, at your own timing. So just make sure that you are following what is happening in in right here in the city of Providence. Just get engaged.